All right, Mayor and Common Council. Here this evening to give you an update as promised. Last time I was here before you on June 7th at the regularly scheduled council meeting, we kicked off the One White Plains update to the Conference of Plan. As we're calling it, One White Plains, an updated vision for our city. And I did promise at that meeting, you recall, bringing our consultants that we've retained to help us in these efforts to meet you all as the council and to give a brief presentation on kind of their credentials and where we are to date. I'm going to give a quick commercial before I hand it over to BFJ Planning. Commercial about our website. I'm very proud of the onewhiteplains.com website. So I'm sure many of you have been there already. For the folks watching at home, I hope you go there right now. We've developed it in-house and what it really is intended to do is solicit key public feedback, stakeholder feedback, community feedback, early on in the process. So this is what it looks like if you go there. And I do want to highlight a couple of things. One is the ability, as you see in the top of the website there, to have a participate tab where you can enter information on a vision survey we presented. So we did have the question that's been up since that presentation I made to you about a month and a half ago about what are the three words that inspire your vision for the future of White Plains? I'm glad to say that we've gotten quite a response already. A upwards of 150 people already have responded. And that's in addition to some of the, we do have a blank box. You can write anything you want. We've gotten a lot of feedback there. I do encourage everybody to go to the website as well. In addition to the vision survey, you also have the ability to sign up for updates. So status updates as to where we are in the process as we move forward. And the other thing is we have media. So for example, the presentation this evening, you can get kind of in a more, I won't say more digestible, but an easier way to find all the presentations specific to the Conference of Planning process are on the media tab of the onewhiteplains.com website. So before I turn it over to Sarah and Simon from BFJ, I do want to say this is an example of kind of that award cloud we've put together from the 150 some odd responses already. So this is a preview of the kind of things folks are saying in response to their vision of future of White Plains. So just again, some community diversity, vibrant sustainability, all the vision words that we're looking to capture as part of the initial visioning process. So onewhiteplains.com, I encourage everybody to check it out, tweet it, put on Instagram, whatever the kids are doing these days. And I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and Simon from BFJ to give you an update. There you go.
So sensitive, it disappeared and you walked away. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Common Council. My name is Sarah Jaikle. I'm a principal at BFJ Planning. For those of you, I think Chris may have talked us up a little bit at the June 7th briefing, but just to reiterate, we are a comprehensive planning firm with more than 40 years of experience in the metropolitan region. Have been a principal of the firm for, I think, going on more than 10 years now. Actually, I've worked with John Kirkpatrick quite often over the years, I think on my very first planning project about 17 years ago. So I am so excited to be here tonight to meet all of you and really kick off a little bit more formally, the start of the comprehensive plan, this Phase One Imagine. So just to quickly introduce my team, again, I'm Sarah Jaikle. I'm joined tonight by Simon Cates, who's the project manager, and then other members of our team who are not here tonight are Mark Frecker as project planner, and then Christine Jimenez, who is our planner on the project. You will be seeing them in the future as we will be back hopefully on a fairly regular basis over the next year or so as we move through the process. For the benefit of those who are joining from home, I don't think I need to tell any of you sort of the importance and significance of a comprehensive plan, but for those who are watching from home and may not be so familiar with this process and may not understand why it's so important, I just wanted to briefly review sort of the purpose and intent and importance of comprehensive planning and the comprehensive planning process. Comprehensive plan is an official, long-range document that provides policy guidance for future growth, development, land use, infrastructure, and community services and facilities. As you may know, you adopted a plan in 1997. There was an update in 2006. So you are certainly, the city is certainly ready to engage and undertake an update in 2021, going, moving into 2022. A comprehensive plan really sets the goals and recommendations for policy in the city and future land use decisions, particularly zoning, really need to be in line with the goals from that comprehensive plan and this process. One of the critical components of comprehensive planning really is public engagement and public outreach. And to that end, we are working with staff to really craft a broad engagement and inclusive engagement process to reach some groups that may not have traditionally been involved in the city planning efforts in the past and so that this plan really is representative of One White Plains. In terms of schedule, I think Chris may have presented this, Commissioner Gomez may have presented this back on your June 7th briefing, but here is the overall timeline for those at home. Again, we are in this Phase One, which is Imagine. And this is really getting the ball rolling and moving into the process. We've kicked off with the website. We are out with a visioning survey. And one of the main tasks that we have as part of this Phase One is really crafting this community engagement strategy. This will really outline all of the efforts we will undertake for community engagement over the next year to year and a half through this process. We also will culminate sort of this Phase One with a community engagement workshop, which we will, I think we're aiming for late in November. Again, as part of this process, there really are these three phases, this public outreach, sorry, there's three steps in this Phase One, which is the public outreach, the background research, and then developing the plan. Moving through Imagine phase, ending in the fall, we'll be moving into the Plan phase, probably sometime late fall, early 2022, which really will kick off the content of the plan as we will finalize the vision and move into framing the policies and policy recommendations around land use development and other things. And then finally, following the Phase Two plan is really this Phase Three Implement, which is the long-term implementation of the plan. And the plan will culminate with a future land use chapter and probably a matrix that will outline all of the steps needed to sort of implement all of the policy recommendations. Since Commissioner Gomez was here before you back in June, we've been very busily working with staff on a number of plan elements or project elements, including two site tours. We were out with staff on June 9th, where we did a very comprehensive tour of the whole city, looking at a lot of the potential development sites as well as sites that are currently under consideration for development. And then again, we were out on June 24th with the mayor, who sort of kindly gave us a few hours of his time to really take us through all of the various neighborhoods. And it was very, very informative. With that, I'm going to turn it to Simon just to walk through sort of some of the other steps that we have taken over the last month.
Great, thank you all. It's nice to see you all tonight. And one thing I want to highlight as I dive in here is that you're probably going to get to see a lot of us over the course of the next year plus. And the reason is that with a comprehensive plan, the only body that can adopt the plan is the Common Council. So it's ultimately going to be your document. We want to make sure you're up to speed on everything that's going on. We don't want to get to, you know, toward the end of the process and put something before you that you've not seen or you've not had many opportunities to give us guidance on. And so it's good to see you all tonight in order to get this process going. The last thing we wanted to cover here on the next sequence of slides is just to give you all and everyone at home a sense of ways to get involved now and some of the public outreach opportunities that are coming in the near future. These are really just the start of the process. As Sarah talked about, as we get into Phase Two in next year, there are going to be many more opportunities to participate, but we want to make sure folks have an idea of what the opportunities are right now. The first one, as Chris talked about, is the website, onewhiteplains.com. There is some information up there now. We hope that folks take a look at it this evening, but also continue to go back to that website as we add more information going forward. Great maps and other materials that folks in the planning department have put online for members of the community to see. And the other thing that Chris also mentioned, which is on the website, is the vision survey. A great opportunity right now for folks in White Plains to start framing what this vision is, right? There's 150-plus responses as so far. As Chris mentioned, we want to see that number keep going up. The vision survey is going to be open for several months. It's not closing soon, but we want to make sure that we hear from as many people as possible. It's a short survey, just that one question, right? What three words inspire your vision for the future of White Plains? The other thing we want to start notifying people about is this informational handbook. We gave you all a hard copy of this tonight. I think this can be on the website shortly if it's not already. So this is meant for the public to start seeing, all right, what is this process? What is a comprehensive plan, as Sarah started to talk about tonight? What does the overall timeline look like? What are other ways that we can get involved? Who are the people involved in the process? What are the different roles? It's just a sort of big picture primer on what the process is. So something that we want, we want people to start to take a look at and get a feel for what the process is going to be. The other thing that's coming up that we wanted to notify all of you about and also folks at home is the Listening Tour, the One White Plains Listening Tour. This is really the first sort of in-person public opportunity for people to start talking about what their concerns are, what some of the key issues and opportunities are in the city of White Plains. These, this is, you know, not formal public workshops yet. We'll get to that in just a moment. But an opportunity for people to come to a meeting with, primarily with staff from the planning department and just talk, right? What are, what are the issues that are facing your community, your neighborhood, your community organization, whatever the case is, right? And so there's a poster here on the screen. The first, the first Listening Tour meeting is coming up on August 27th, so there's a little bit of time for folks to get ready, but there's, I think, something like a dozen plus, maybe 15 meetings here. There's one, one virtual meeting there. I think we've got one meeting identified that will have translation into French Creole and a couple in Spanish as well. And so this poster that you see up on the screen here, I think, will also be on the website shortly so people can start getting ready for those, for those Listening Tour dates.
I have a question.
Please.
With the Listening Tour, let's take for instance, the one on August 27th. Will it be recorded if someone misses it? Can they, will it be available on the website for them to watch and learn what was discussed?
We haven't talked about that. Do you want to cover that, Chris?
Yeah, that's a great question. We haven't really confirmed that yet. I mean, the intent of Listening Tour was really just that, was to listen. There wasn't intended to be a big public presentation, so it would be either individual work session, roundtable kind of grouping, but we can certainly look into the possibility of recording or video recording such sessions if feasible.
And since August 27th is around the corner, people are on vacation. I know, I always go on vacation the last week of August, so that's like, it's a really tough time. What are you doing with respect to giving notice to people about this August 27th? How would they notify?
The hope is it'll be everywhere. Again, this poster will be on the website tomorrow. We're going to use multiple ways to get the information out. And again, we rely on the council and others to make sure that social media, we have the city's website, we have the city's Twitter feed, but there will be notice of all these meetings.
Because I will also point out that the largest, oldest black church, Bethel Baptist Church, is right in that same area. A flyer should be up in Bethel Baptist Church like now in having Pastor Williamson involved. So I can tell you this, there are some people who are very cynical, and a term is, I don't want this to be the appearance, the illusion of inclusion, and it's just an illusion of inclusion. So I can say now, if we're, we're coming down on 30 days, August 27th, it's August, it's vacation time, and we want to get flyers out.
No, absolutely. And that was part of the reason, I don't know if Simon noted, that the map here also is a distribution of locations here as well. So the thought was, again, if perhaps you couldn't make the 27th, you know, September 2nd or 13th, so, you know, giving as many opportunities early in the process to be heard. Again, this is not going to be the work sessions like the transit district yet, right? This is very early in the process. We want to hear from folks. We've set up this amazing website. We're already hearing feedback. This is literally face-to-face. You know, again, we're going to have the French Creole translation, Spanish as well. But to answer your question, we will, we will get the word out and we'll get the flyers up tomorrow.
One, I just want to finish one last point. In follow-up to that you're thinking about recording, I think recording helps because this is what happens. Someone will say to me, had I been there, I would have mentioned X, Y, and Z, and they didn't even consider X, Y, and Z. But if you have the recording of the Listening Tour, people can feel, rest assured, yes, they did hear this point about housing. They did hear this point about X, Y, and Z.
Oh, absolutely. And we'll be taking notes, and there was thought of audio recordings, actually, Imagine That, just audio, but we'll talk about that.
So, yeah, the point I wanted to make is the goal is not that someone would attend all of these meetings. These are, we're trying to give as many opportunities in as many locations as possible to get as many voices heard, but I'm sure if you're, if someone has a comprehensive plan junkie and wants to attend all of them, like, you know, traveling with the dead or something, the Grateful Dead is what I'm referring to.
And that was, that was the theme here with the Listening Tour.
For most people, just having an opportunity, you know, they're going to look on that schedule, we hope, and find an opportunity that works for them, and then they will be heard because exactly, Council President, what you just raised, is exactly our goal is that, and the reason for it's being called One White Plains is that we want to hear from everyone, and that means it's going to take some doing, and that's why that's a pretty expansive list of meetings, but.
Yeah, so we focus on geographic distribution, and of course, that last meeting, Simon noted on the 4th, will be, again, a virtual meeting. So we have multiple times, so you can hit that QR code right there. We've already branded it. You'll get right into the Zoom meeting, and we'll listen. That's the intent, to listen.
I think Councilman Presser had her head up first, then Councilman Boobie.
I think the website is magnificent, but those of us who have worked in public information know that people don't go to websites unless they are driven there, unless they are directed there, and unless it's surrounded by carrots. There's some, there's got to be some motivation also to get there. So how we can practice that, we have a year and a half of wanting and needing feedback, and we can start by figuring out ways to encourage the vision survey participation. So the link to the website needs to be, you should forgive me for being a little prescriptive here, in emails that can be forwarded, in Facebook postings, and heaven knows what else, Twitter and Instagram and et cetera, that can be shared. And a little notice, please send this on. We can all do that, but there, if we, if you can set up a mechanism by which all the neighborhood associations get the email or the Facebook post, El Centro Hispano, the churches and houses of worship in White Plains, and et cetera.
That, so that is exactly the kinds of discussions that we've been having at BFJ with Chris and his staff.
I'm glad to hear that.
And it's an excellent point, right? We can put all the best information on the website. If people don't know how to get there, or they don't even know that it exists, it's worthless, right? So we've talked about working through the city's social media outlets. We're starting to roll out outreach to a bunch of different stakeholder groups to let them know about the process and the website and the vision survey. So it's a, it's a great reinforcement of some of the things that we've talked about. And if there are specific outlets like that, anything else that any of you have in mind, let us know. This is exactly why we're here tonight, to get your feedback about other ways that we can be notifying the community.
I'm looking at someone who could be helpful.
And absolutely, yeah.
I am glad to also hear that you've already discussed this. I've brought it up anytime we've talked about the One White Plains so far and all the different community groups and partners that we can use as conduits to get this information and have our residents come out to a place that they're safe and they're comfortable, that's close to home or where they work, and they can come out and make sure their voices are heard. I love the idea of the Listening Tour. I appreciate the variety of times, the different days of the week, the different neighborhoods. I think all that is great. One thing, and I hate to be, you know, the negative one here, that I think we have to consider as we prepare for some of these dates is there are still people that are apprehensive about being in public. COVID is still a threat to some, especially immunocompromised, and I would love to see an opportunity for people that are home by choice and not able to be there to still be able to participate, if it's happening in their local community. I recognize that there is an email address that's already been established, so people can start to send, and I know it's in here, I'm sure you'll say it as well, but, and it's on the website, so people can start sharing their thoughts, concerns, issues, and questions, but I would love to see a Zoom option if possible, or something of the sort, a dial-in on every one of these, if that's a possibility. I don't mean to, you know.
Sure.
I think we have to just, I think it's, we have to be mindful of the time that we're in. And I mean, we worked through the police reform during COVID, and we still were able to reach as many residents as possible, engage the community, and this is that on an even larger scale. So I just want to make sure that we're being mindful and we consider that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We just have one more slide here, just to plug one more bit, and then we're happy to stick around and take your questions, which is just, as we're doing all of this work now, the Listening Tour, the Vision Survey, what we're building up toward is hopefully an in-person public workshop, community workshop in the fall, likely in November. We don't have a date yet, so everyone should stay tuned for that. But, and it's an excellent point, and it's one thing, another thing that we're thinking about is just, you know, we know where COVID is now. We'll have to see how things develop over the next couple of months. Are there still going to be some folks who aren't comfortable coming out? Then we'll have to figure out a way to make sure that people can still participate. But the way we're thinking about this visioning open house is almost a sort of a bridge between the Phase One, where we are now, trying to figure out what the community engagement strategy is, and the Phase Two, which is sort of digging into the actual content of the comprehensive plan, having much more, you know, public workshops and trying to think about what some of the policies are. So that's what this, this event is supposed to be. All right, we're wrapping up Phase One, we're kicking off Phase Two, and so, you know, stay tuned, take a look at the website and the city's social media as we get more details for this community vision workshop. We'll spread the word about that as well.
Councilman Kirkpatrick.
In the middle of all of this, in your first phase, you are also updating socioeconomic I assume that's more than just socioeconomic, that we're talking about traffic, as for instance, possibly changes in retail patterns? Would that also be included?
What we had in mind there for this Phase One is really just taking a look at the census data that the city's been tracking and starting to incorporate the newest data as, you know, as 2020 census data comes online. We'll take a look at that as well. More subject matter-specific data, like traffic patterns, like, you know, retail market studies and that sort of thing. I think it's probably more of a, you know, into the meat of the plan, Phase Two body of work.
Do you envision bringing back any of this updated socioeconomic data towards the end of the first phase in these community meetings to bring the population up to date of what you're finding so far about the patterns that we know so far?
We haven't talked about that. You know, the Listening Tours, my sense is probably not in the Listening Tours. What we had in mind for the Listening Tours, we can be flexible, right? But it's really just, you know, members of city staff or our team, just their, you know, as it says, right, just to hear from folks. We haven't, we haven't done all of the back, you know, background studies yet. We haven't heard from the community yet. So we don't really know until we've done this first step what some of the key issues are. So we want to start with that. Let's hear what, what the concerns are and then, and then.
That's a great question, Councilman, but I will add to that as well. As I anticipate this, this final kind of Phase One activity, this November visioning open house, to include some of that information, we do have, which is important, right? We talk all the time about Conference of Planning, but the city on a regular basis, you know, Judy Mezzi's here, who runs the Community Development Program out of the planning department, but as you all know, the Common Council's adopted a consolidated plan for HUD funding, which included a wealth of demographic data and trends and economics. So we do have a lot of that at our fingertips. We're hoping to get the census data in the coming months or so, but what we may have available again by November is something we can give a broad view. But I think Simon was just parsing between these Listening Tours, which are very much one-on-one hearing you versus we're going to present, you know, the typical planning, we present, then we hear from you. It's nice just to have people come in and say, you know, this is what we're concerned about, this is what we want to hear, this is what we hope the focus of One White Plains will be. So I think that's kind of parsing, it's more of a semantics.
I could also envision that some of what you'll hear will be, what are the patterns? What's going on with the retail? What can we expect to happen?
The impact of COVID for people, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think that the, one of the main points of the Listening Tour is hearing those exact comments, so that can help us frame the contents of the comprehensive plan moving into Phase Two, which is, I think, one of the other tasks we have for Phase One, ending at this workshop, is really presenting that table of contents of all of the issues that will be studied. In the informational handbook you have, there is a sort of a preliminary list of suggested topics that we would, we would include in a comprehensive plan update, but they may shift through this process depending on what we hear from the public and from all of you as well.
Councilman Brash.
I agree with everything my colleague said, that we need very broad outreach and certainly we need to broaden it from this list here. We need, as Council President Robinson said, we need causes of worship and Centro Hispano and others, and we can help you with that. And I know personally, I am willing to help you do outreach to certain communities, and I have my own ideas, and most of us have our ideas. Also, we have to be careful to make this good for people, accessible for people with many types of disabilities. I'm embarrassed to be a complainer and to say this, but I have very good vision, and I never take my glasses out at a council meeting because I've never needed them. This is impossible to read and just, I mean, I need you to know that this is not really the kind of thing you can show to members of the public. It is, it is just not readable to anyone. So you have to do a better job, no offense, and that means for all kinds of disabilities, we're going to be trying to reach out to people with all kinds of issues, and we want to include them in this process. So I don't mean to be difficult, but we need things that people can see, so thank you.
Understood. On the website, this is just, not to make excuses, because you're absolutely right, I can't see it either, I have my glasses. This, on the website, when this is posted, it will be the same as the presentation on the screen, so it will be full, full page. So that should hopefully.
Also, I mean, I know this is a work session. This is the first that we're seeing of this. If possible, we'd like to see it, and I don't know, it's not a blame game. I wish I had read this before tonight.
And just one other follow-up, Councilman, is with respect to the groups, we do, we have been working with Karen Pasquali from the mayor's office and have a pretty comprehensive list of community stakeholders and organizations. I think there's, I don't know, 40 or so groups there that we are reaching out to over the next weeks. They will be getting the information packet, a link to the website, the vision survey, and so really taking those steps. And also, we're asking them in that correspondence, how can we reach you? What's the best way to reach your members? And getting that information and starting to build that community engagement piece because it is so critical. And I think we can probably, once it's finalized, share that with all of you to make sure we're not missing anyone. I think that would be very helpful.
We're definitely missing people, like, so that's the point, is that any one of us can think of things, and that's, it's a sport to find out what didn't get included. That is good, that is a good thing. So that's what we're asking for is, and I was just going to suggest that, let's get the list of the ones that we already are working, because El Centro Hispano is definitely on the list.
They're on the list.
Didn't say that right now. And some other.
Oh, Chris, Commissioner Gomez has it, right here.
Well, my goodness.
All right.
That's great. I'm trying to figure out how to include people.
No, 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 no.
And I know, and I know the commissioner, and certainly Karen Pasquali, who's our favorite and does amazing work for our cities, but.
But I just want to be clear, this is not intended to be complete.
Yes.
The point is to save you the time. If you see something you were going to tell us about, then you don't have to tell us about it.
And I was just, if I, no, just to that point, I think, again, to the mayor's point, yeah, totally a starting point, and obviously recognition is as we start the process, we'll be hearing from a lot more and making every effort to get deep in the community. The thing I failed, and Judy just reminded me of this too, what I failed to mention too, is already we've been out in the community at some of the food distributions with the tablet as well. And so some of the dates, and Judy frankly was behind and Karen behind a lot of the dates on the Listening Tour, really trying to maximize opportunities for the food distribution stuff at Slater Center. So there is that synergy already of thinking, where could we? So I'm not selling it, right? I think Judy or Karen would have done a better job on the Listening Tour explaining exactly how much thought has gone into trying to outreach to, again, just a small sampling of, so. of, so. And the one other thing for Sarah, I couldn't help myself, if I was Sarah, I would have said they're trying to be sustainable and not print too many papers, but, yeah, this wasn't intended to be a presentation. It's just a print appeal.
I just have one more thing.
Sorry?
I have one more thing to say.
Sure.
So I just have a suggestion for a copy of like the Listening Tour sign, especially because the first one is a month away. Maybe we can, maybe this was already considered, posting it at the places where we post, like the concerts in the park or sign up for Little League or this is what's going on at the camps. So there's a bunch of intersections I'm thinking of right now in my head, but if we start posting that now, then it gets people used to seeing it, looking at it, people driving by, walking by, frequenting, you know, the restaurants and seeing it, whatever it may be, because to maximize that exposure so people don't see it two days after it was in their neighborhood. Not that they can't go to another one, but still, just to maximize that.
And you'll notice, that's a great point, Councilwoman. You'll notice there are several at the schools, so we've been in contact with the school district, which is, we all know, a wonderful conduit into reaching a lot of folks.
Absolutely.
So of all ages, I might add.
Exactly.
So it's intended to really be across the spectrum, but great point.
I just have a follow-up question on the public workshop, because I noticed that it's singular, public workshop, so just one, how many people do you foresee there? And is it, workshops are just interactive, so who's invited for this interactive public workshop? I'm just trying to understand.
So this, this one, the one in November, the Community Visioning Open House, will be the first of many.
Okay.
Not the only one. It's sort of just the one that's that transition from the Phase 1 to the Phase 2. During Phase 2, in 2022, maybe into 2023, there will be many more different types of workshops, different types of opportunities. Who's invited? Everyone. It's public, it'll be open to the public, and we'll work with Chris and his office and hopefully all of you to make sure that we're getting the word out to, you know, to everyone who's, to everyone, right, everyone in the community. We haven't talked really in detail about what the format is, but we want to, you know, usually for us at this stage of a comprehensive planning process, we want something that is just really open, right? So it's not, we don't have ideas yet about what the policies ought to be. So it's probably not roundtables where you're sort of digging into details and critiquing and coming up with other ideas. It might be more of, as it says in Open House, where there might be different stations around a big room with some initial ideas about what we've heard in the visioning survey and in the Listening Tours, you know, hey, here are some ideas that we've heard so far. Is this on the right track? Are there other things that we haven't heard yet? So it's really just a way to continue that early conversation about what is the vision, what are the key areas that have to be identified? And then as we get into those later public workshops, we'll start thinking about details about, all right, here are some, here's what we heard at the last meeting, you know, here is some, here's the next iteration of some ideas about what that might mean. What are some policies? Are we on the right track or did we miss something, right? So we'll keep coming back to the community and try to get that iterative feedback along the way.
Awesome.
Well, thank you very much, and you've given us all our homework, and we'll be sending you some additional points of contact. And I think what happens is one point of contact leads to another and another and another, and that's how we envision this. There used to be a shampoo commercial involving that, I think, and so on and so on, or something like that.
To whom should, to whom should we send our?
That's the goal, is to get the word out to everybody in this, you know, just in this room, we have a lot of points of contact, but it's, it should expand beyond that, so.
Great.
We're to it.
Very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.